Okay, everybody ready to go? Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Edina City Council meeting. We're going to convene the meeting in a moment. It is Tuesday, May 6, 2025, 7:00 p.m. And before I call the meeting to order and ask for a roll called by our Clerk Sharon Allison, I wanted to just remind everybody, as Director Benarott did, that we're doing these meetings in a hybrid sort of fashion. People may be watching in some form virtually. A variety of different methods. They can do that by, or they're appearing here live in chambers. There's a couple of different situations in the agenda this evening where citizens can participate either live or remotely, and that is in community comment. And also, we have one public hearing matter this evening. And the community comment, just a reminder, as Director Benarott said, you cannot speak to the council on something that's on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. Otherwise, we're welcome to hear your observations or your concerns, whether you're live or remote. Having provided that information, I'm going to call the meeting to order, and I'm going to ask our Clerk Sharon Allison to call the roll. Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Rissers absent. Mayor Hovland.
Here. Pledge of Allegiance is next, folks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. It's been published in advance to the general public and to the council members. Anyone on staff of the council wish to modify the meeting agenda, any form?
No.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
Still moved. Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Agnew seconds the approval of the meeting agenda. Any further discussion? Those in favor of approval of the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. The meeting agenda is adopted. Now we are at community comment, and we're going to get the phone numbers and all the contact information up on the screen so people can see that. But as we do that, I'm going to invite members of the public who wish to address the council to come forward, and we'll hear their comments, and then the city manager is going to respond to comments we had at the last meeting. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jim Groats. I live at 5513 Park Place, and my other Edina address is 5200 Wilson Road, short distance from here. I'm very pleased with the construction progress that Ames is making on the 50th Street Bridge thus far. They're just really doing swell on this. And I'm here because I have concerns as a person that uses that intersection frequently going down Wilson Road, and I also walk it regularly to Grandview. And I'm here with a request, and that request is that we make the west side going down at least to the driveway of 5200 Wilson Road, no parking. We're talking only six or eight places. With the increased traffic coming off of Eden Avenue through there, and we've got buses coming through there, and we've got everything, and we've got bicycles, and we've got walkers, and we have the regular, you know, extra burden traffic, you know, we'll make it through this if we're all heads up and just be a little careful. But it coming off that, it's dangerous. We have additional vehicles coming off. And so my request is that you make that area that I described, which we're talking six or eight cars here, make it no parking. Those people can either park over at the Jerry's Ramp. There's adequate parking they can use, and they may feel like they're being disadvantaged, but we're all going to have to give during this construction. So my request again is to give that your consideration, and thank you for your time and courtesy.
Yeah, thank you for that. I've made that observation too. I think it's a good observation on your part, Mr. Groats.
Good evening. My name is Nora Davis, and I live at 6921 Southdale Road, of course, in Edina, in the Lake Cornelia neighborhood. And I'm here tonight to give a shout out and a big thank you to the Edina Police. As you know, the Southdale area wins the prize for the most calls every week. It was 347 the past seven days, and I appreciate all that they do. I remember waking up in the middle of the night and hearing drag racing along France Avenue, and I thought, I need to call the police. And I thought, no, I bet they're already there. But we have learned a lot about crime in the last year. We know about flock cameras, and they're watching license plates, and they're doing warrant arrests, and taking care of disturbances, and dealing with mental health issues. And I think how lucky we are to have them. So thank you, and a round of applause for the Edina Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. There's a gentleman that stood up in the back. Yes, sir.
My.
Yeah, we're going to give you a handheld microphone if you want to use that center console. And you can stay right there and put it right in the middle, I think.
This is my side, and that's your page. And here's your microphone.
All right, thanks. Hi, my name is Taylor Rushline. I live at 5744 Ewing Avenue South. I'm here to advocate for improving bikeability throughout the city. That's a huge topic, so I'll focus on one point tonight, and that's to ask you to rethink who you are thinking about when these bike projects come to you. And I think we hear the word cyclist, and everyone has an image that pops into their mind, probably looks a lot like me, maybe in better shape, riding their road bike 15, 20 miles an hour down the road. I'm asking you to move away from that image. I want to share a few things. This first is from the Bicycle Master Plan of Edina, and it's breaking down the whole city based on what they think of biking. And I'm asking you to move away from that right side, that 7% or even that 1%, and instead focus on the 60% of the population that's interested but concerned. And they might bike right now, but if there's a barrier or two, if it's not safe, they might not bike at all. And I wanted to share a few images of who this might be to kind of replace that cyclist image. The first, I think you all think of this, and I've heard it plenty of times in discussion here, so thank you for that. It's kids, most importantly, going to and from school, or to all of our great amenities, the Aquatics Center, to a friend's house, really important for them. But there's a couple others, too. The second one, maybe it's a recent retiree who hasn't biked in 20 years, and she just got a new e-bike with the city e-bike rebate plan and wants to go to the new library at Southdale or something like that. But if we're forcing her to be in the street with 30 mile an hour, 40 mile an hour cars, she might not feel comfortable to do that. I should say those first two are AI-generated. This last one is not. So the last is parents, or my wife in this case, where on her own or on my own, we might feel comfortable biking around on our city streets, but if you add kids to the situation, that heightened awareness might just make us less comfortable and unable to travel the way that we want to. So I'm asking you to think about people like this and kind of move away from that cyclist, that 1%, that 8% cyclist. Thanks for your time.
All right. Thanks for being here. Anyone else wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them? Okay, let's check again to see if anyone is watching and listening online and see if they want to address the council.
I have no one online, sir.
Okay. All right, let's turn then to our city manager, who will be addressing matters that were raised at the last council meeting by some of our residents. And those questions were answered that week of that particular meeting, and those answers were posted online on our website, but nonetheless, we also follow up at the next city council meeting and have the city manager provide those supplemental answers as well. Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council. Yes, so those questions and responses are on our website, and they're additive, so every time, we add more to previous questions. We had three questions at our last meeting in April. The first one was, why is the city considering using franchise fees for street reconstruction? We're considering it because we have a goal from the council in this budget cycle to reduce our general fund tax levy. And right now, we are using some of that tax levy to pay for special assessments or our side of the special assessment, street reconstruction project costs. By replacing that, by generating more money in franchise fees, we can replace some of that property tax-generated money, and we can reduce the property tax levy for our property taxpayers. So that's the answer about why we're considering it. The next question was, is there a cap on how much franchise fees can be increased? No, there is not a cap. There's not a state-imposed cap. The only cap would be at the local level, so a locally elected city and local government representatives have a chance to control that. The final question was, how are current utility franchise fees used? We currently divide our utility franchise fees into three buckets. The first is the pedestrian and cyclist safety fund. 50% of the total utility franchise fees we collect go into the PACS fund. The Conservation and Sustainability Fund, the CAS fund, 39% goes into that, and the final 11% we're reserving for streetlights and street lighting. PACS funds are used primarily for construction and maintenance of sidewalks, bikeways, trails, crosswalks, associated signage and pavement markings, as well as staffing and operational costs to maintain that system. The CAS funds are used for energy efficiency, renewable energy, electrification, capital investments that have sustainability at their root, policy implementation, and staffing to implement the policies that we are adopting there. City Council is currently considering the use of some of these funds to pay for street reconstruction. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to be getting, we gave the council some feedback or received some feedback from council prior to this meeting on that subject, and we'll be having more discussion around utility franchise fees later this spring.
Good. Thank you. Yes, Member Agnew.
Thank you. So I have one follow-up question, and then maybe one point of clarification, at least in how I'm understanding it. So one of the reasons that we as council directed exploring using this as a way to do the street reconstruction, I think, was partially because that's how a lot of other cities use it. And so I just want to clarify, it's kind of precedent in looking at what other places are doing. But the way that I understood Mr. Day's last question on if there was any regulation about what they can and cannot be used for, I interpreted that to be a little bit more broad. Like, is there regulation at a state level about how these utility fees can be used? And I don't know if you have an answer to that.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Very little, actually. They're a broad revenue source for cities. Some cities use them for street reconstruction, capital investment. Some cities use them for operating costs, too. So at this point in the legislative history of franchise fees, there's still a lot of authority that's kind of taken down by local governments to use the money that way.
Attorney Kendall, would you want to supplement the city manager's response on the legality or the use of franchise fees and the scope of their use from a state statute standpoint?
Mayor, not much to supplement. I think the manager's response was correct. There's not a lot of limitations on how they can be used.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Next, we're going to move on to the consent portion of the agenda, and we've got several items on that portion of the agenda. Member Jackson was not here for the last meeting, so we're going to remove the minutes for the work session and the regular meeting of the council for April 16, 2025. And then I'll entertain a motion. Does anyone, first of all, I ask, does anybody on the council wish to remove any other items from the consent agenda? All right, hearing nothing. Is there a motion to adopt all of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of item 6.1?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Pierce moves. Member Jackson seconds the adoption of all the items on the consent agenda, except 6.1 in a single motion. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of those items on the consent agenda in a single motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Those items are approved on the consent agenda with the exception of 6.1, and we'll turn our attention back to that, which represents the minutes for the work session and the regular city council meeting on April 16, 2025. Does anybody have any changes, corrections, or additions to those minutes? All right. Is there a motion to adopt those minutes for the April 16, 2025 meetings of the city council at both its work session and regular meeting of the city council?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Agnew moves, and Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the regular and work session minutes for April 16, 2025 for the Edina City Council. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Those minutes are adopted for both the work session and the regular session.
And I abstain.
You do abstain. One abstention. Thank you for that. Then we're going to turn to the next portion of the agenda, which is the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. And we have coming up next Tuesday, the 13th of May, at 9:00 in the morning, a flag-raising ceremony, and it is done in conjunction with National Police Week, which is going to be designated May 11 through the 17th, 2025. We have some of our peace officers in the chambers this evening with us. I'm going to read that proclamation and invite anyone in our listening audience, our viewing audience, who wishes to participate or watch that flag-raising ceremony, which is quite significant, I think, on the morning of the 13th of May, next Tuesday at 9:00 here. Welcome to attend. Many of our public safety personnel will be there, both police officers and firefighters, and it is an appropriate way to celebrate this week, this National Police Week. And here is the proclamation. National Police Week designating May 11 through the 17th, 2025, as National Police Week. Whereas the week of May 11 through the 17, 2025, is National Police Week in the United States. And whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Edina Police Department. And whereas nearly 55,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported annually resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries to those law enforcement personnel. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, over 24,412 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington, D.C. And whereas 345 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Memorial this spring, including 148 officers killed in 2024 and 197 officers killed in the prior years. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed on the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 37th Annual Candlelight Vigil to be held on May 13, 2025. And whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the United States in honor of all the fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff on May 15, 2025. Now, therefore, the city council, the city of Edina, Minnesota hereby proclaims May 11 through the 17th, 2025, as National Police Week in the city of Edina, and calls upon the residents of the city of Edina to observe this week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep the residents and the city of Edina safe. Is there a motion to adopt or proclamation is read?
Still moved. A second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the National Police Week proclamation of May 11 through the 17th, 2025. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the proclamation as read, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. The proclamation is adopted. We have Sergeant Darren Cisik and Sergeant Emily Jepson with us this evening to give us some information around this week that's coming up next week. And I'll also hand you the proclamation. I think we'll probably want to take a photo, but I want to allow both of you to make some remarks first. So welcome. Pleased to have you here. Always good to see both of you at a city council meeting or out about our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland. Good evening, council. On behalf of the men and women of the Edina Police Department, we are honored and deeply grateful to accept the proclamation for National Police Week. The line of duty deaths so far in 2025 is 23. We would like to share the story of one of those officers. On April 22, 2025, Deputy Jesse Perez conducted a traffic stop in Dawson County, Texas. While on the stop, Deputy Perez was struck and killed by debris from a passing vehicle. Deputy Perez had served in law enforcement for just eight months and was 42 years old. He was also a father and husband. When most think of line of duty deaths, critical incidents often come to mind. However, Deputy Perez's sacrifice is a somber reminder that our daily routine is inherently
Good evening again, council. So this week is a time of reflection and remembrance. We pause to honor the dedication, commitment, and sacrifice of law enforcement officers across the country, especially those who have given their lives in the line of duty, like Deputy Perez. It is also a moment to recognize the officers who continue to serve with integrity and courage each and every day. Our work in law enforcement is not just a job, it's a calling. It demands compassion, resilience, and an unwavering commitment to justice and public safety. We are proud to stand with the dedicated members of our department who serve this community with professionalism and heart. We're also grateful to the citizens and leaders of Edina for your support. It is through our partnership with the community that we are able to build trust, solve problems, and create a safer and stronger place to live. As we commemorate National Police Week, let us not only remember the fallen, but also renew our dedication to the values and guide our service through honor, duty, and respect for all. Thank you again for this recognition, and thank you for standing with us.
Sergeant Davis, thank you for being with us this evening, and my apologies, I got the first name right, not the last name. And it was changed on the agenda, and I missed that, so my deep apologies, and I'm so pleased to have you here. And Sergeant Jepson, I did not mess up your name.
Not.
Yeah. So I'm going to come down and hand you the proclamation. I'm going to ask the council members to come down with me and have this photograph taken to celebrate this important week ahead of us here.
Blinding when you turn around. Squish, 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 squish. Couple more. Couple more.
So as I said, if you want to see the mayor and the city manager try to do left, 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 right, left on Tuesday morning, come on over about 9:00, and they'll try to do everything appropriately as we raise the flag and take it to half-staff. All right, that was the only item on the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda this evening. Now we're going to move on to the only public hearing matter we have this evening, and we're going to take some public testimony tonight, and I think staff's going to suggest that we leave it open for continued input from residents until Sunday, May 11, 2025. Carrie Teague, our community development director, is going to introduce the topic, and we've got representatives here from the applicant that will be speaking as well. So I'll turn now to Director Teague to introduce the matter.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a site you're familiar with. We've had a few development proposals here over the last few years. It's the property located directly west of Southdale, 22-acre parcel, sometimes referred to as the Southdale Office Center, currently guided in the comprehensive plan for office and residential use. It has a PUD zoning. That zoning designation was created in 2017, and the plan on the screen was the development that was supposed to occur on that site, but never did. The Bank of America did develop in the south portion of the site, but the retail space, hotels, office, medical, none of this has occurred. Just to, as a refresher, some of the development projects that we've seen proposed on the site, this was one probably three or four years ago. It was apartments, medical office, some parking ramps. This was denied by the council. Most recently, just last year, a medical building was proposed where that middle office is located. They would have torn that down, built this new medical office with the ramp in the back, and then a new tavern on France. The applicant didn't pursue that. It went to planning commission, but never came to the city council. So the proposal before you this evening is to rescind that original PUD from 2017, go back to the original zoning of PCD III on the site. What they'd like to do is just remodel that middle building that was supposed to be removed. They would also, there's some handicap accessibility issues, that they would build these new entrances to that facility, provide some handicap accessibility to the site. They would also do some improvement of the parking area in front of that middle office building, all code compliant. The number of parking spaces is code compliant over the entire site. So the request before the council is to rescind that PUD and rezone the site to its original designation of PCD III. They're also asking for a conditional use permit for the existing office buildings. Offices are conditionally permitted use in that PCD III zoning district. So looking at the comprehensive plan, the office residential, the land use categories, the existing uses out there are all consistent with the comprehensive plan. Primary uses on the site, again, office, with the secondary uses of the bank and the restaurant. So the uses are compliant with the comprehensive plan. In terms of the rezoning, the factors that we look at, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Will it be detrimental to surrounding properties? Won't result in an overly intensive land use. It would not result in undue traffic congestion, conforms to the city code standards, and has a proper relationship between buildings. Both staff and the planning commission believe all of these factors are met. Again, the only changes that you would see out there are those little front entryways and then the reconfigured front parking area. There actually would be a reduction in the floor area ratio that was allowed under the PUD at 1.0. Under the PCD III zoning, just a 0.75 is allowed. So actually, they're losing a little square footage here with the site. Conditional use permit criteria also is met, very similar to the rezoning. So primary issue is, is it reasonable to rezone back to the original PCD III zoning district? Again, staff and the planning commission believe that it is and are recommending approval. The planning commission recommendation was unanimous. But again, we are asking that you close the public hearing on Sunday, May 11, and continue action to your meeting on May 20. With that, I can answer questions, and the applicant is here to present as well.
Yeah, very succinct, but comprehensive, so thanks for that. Let me turn to my council member colleagues and see if anybody has a question for you at this point in time. All right, I think we're eager to get on to the applicant's presentation, and I think we've got, you want to introduce who's here from the applicant's team? I see Dela Colpin coming up from OV Development, and then I think Sean Smith is here as well from Wildemir.
Good evening, Mayor Hovland and city council members. My name is Dela Colpin. I'm with Olympus Ventures, one of the ownership teams for Southdale Office Partners, as well as Sean Smith of Wildemir. I know that Carrie gave you an overview of what we're planning to do, but I just want to take a few more minutes to show you a little bit more in detail of the plans that we are proposing on the site currently. How do I just move up forward to the next page? Okay. So again, I think as Carrie talked about, you know, our goal right now, as we've looked at the site, moving, rezoning it, is to really focus on our current buildings on the site. We really want to look at preserving and enhancing the existing buildings, specifically the 6,700 and the 6,750 buildings. We want to improve the curb appeal to France Avenue. We want to improve the ADA accessibility. I don't know if anybody's been in the office building, but there are some challenges with specifically the 6,700 and the 6,750 buildings. And then we really want to look at modernizing our building systems within that structure. So just to give you a little bit overview of what we're planning to do, the boxes are really showing what our work is. We're going to have a new entry at the 6,750 building. It's tucked a little bit behind Tavern on France. We're going to have a new entry at the 6,700, and then this whole area will have new parking. And I'm just going to show a little bit more of what we're going to do there. And then we have a new infiltration basin. We do have our approvals from the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District currently, and just waiting for the rezoning to move forward for the project. Just a little bit of view of, this is the existing entries that you see at 6,700 and 6,750. So you can see it's a little bit challenging with the steps, they get slippery. If you are handicapped, you actually have to go around the backside to enter the building. So our goal is to create, as Carrie showed you, these new entry elements for those two buildings. We really wanted to work with the, kind of the mid-century modern architecture and create a statement for these buildings so that people could actually have great visibility. The new entry cubes basically take over the same footprint of what you see from the 6,750. So we're not really increasing in size, but we are enclosing it. This is the plan of the cube. So you'll have an entry. We have stairs on the interior, but we also have what you call a lula elevator so that people can get up and down. A small seating area if people are waiting for someone to pick them up. We do have medical office users in some of these buildings, and so it's a really great place for people to wait and get picked up. And just a few of the interior perspectives to show you a little bit what it's going to feel like. We really want it bright, airy, and again, a great place where people could, you know, potentially meet or wait for someone to pick them up. And that's really the overview of what we're doing on the exterior of the buildings. This is really more of the hardscape and landscape. Again, I talked a little bit about, we really want to improve our curb appeal to France Avenue, really look at adding more plantings and probably creating a more modern look and feel to it. So this is the main entry from France Avenue right here. This area, we're going to create a large roundabout here so that the 6,600 building is in front, and just creating a much more curb appeal for the main entry building. We're looking at new signage, looking at a few other things there. You'll see that we're looking at more varied coloration within the site, so it actually has a different feel throughout the seasons on the site. And then this is in front of 6,700. Tavern on France is just going to be to your left. This is the new cube. We are creating a new plaza so that there could be some, maybe even some community events if, you know, Girl Scouts wanted to sell cookies, or there's just different things that we're looking at. Maybe it can be used beyond just people in the office park itself. And again, you'll see there's a lot more new landscaping. This will have all-new curbing, all-new petuminous. And the one thing that we're really excited about is the Tavern on France, we're looking at enclosing their trash and delivery area, just to kind of hide it so that it isn't quite as open as it is right now. And that really is just showing you again what we're proposing to do on the campus today.
All right, thanks, Ms. Colpin. Anything else from Mr. Smith? Anything? Or is it anything to supplement Ms. Colpin's presentation?
No, I'm just here to answer some questions as they pop up, so.
Okay, all right. Let's see if council members have any questions here for either one of you at this point in time. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is for the applicant. I don't quite understand how the front parking lot is going to change. We've got in the plans, I can't tell what page that's on. So when you're, there's the, show us on here where the existing, that's the existing driveway that's there.
This is the existing driveway that has a signalized intersection. And here, we're going to be creating the roundabout. There's a little, there's quite a bit of space right in here, and it sort of is like no man's land a little bit. And so what we want to do is to create this roundabout to actually have much more clarity of how you get to 6,600, 6,700 building. So that is that place. So really, this box here is showing you where the parking lot improvements are done. If you remember, 6,800 in this area here had new improvements last year. And so this whole area here will have brand-new curbing, it'll have brand-new petuminous striping, and then most of the landscaping is coming out, and we're adding in new landscaping.
Okay, and so that 6,700 entrance will be easier to find if you're going there for the first time?
Yes.
Okay, that, so that, what does a little circle now open up into a more friendly roundabout?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Are there council members at this point in time? Are there some internal improvements that were going to be made? I think that one of the things I've had conversation with folks about is that possibly the cafeteria, which is on the Valley View roadside between those two buildings, would be renovated as well and maybe reused.
So in this building, actually in 6,700 and 6,750, there are capex that we're doing. There's rooftop units, roof, and interior, you know, just infrastructure that we're doing. But you're right, on the garden level of 6,700, there is a cafe that had closed down, I think, right after COVID, and we are looking at rejuvenating that cafe, getting a new tenant in there, and actually maybe even creating a little bit more commons area at that same level. Still TBD because we're really focused on just getting the tenants leasing to be improved on the 6,700 and 6,750.
I think I saw some correspondence from one of our residents at least, maybe more than one, about concerns about that west side. Are you going to be enhancing parking? Might you affect that oak savanna stand out there? My understanding was no, there won't be any impact on the building.
We have no work going on the backside of the property.
And no intention of doing that?
No.
Okay. And no intention of expanding the parking capacity on the backside, on the west side, on the Valley View roadside?
No, again, as I stated earlier, our focus today is really to improve the existing infrastructure and the existing buildings that we've really probably not focused on as we were looking at the 2017 PUD.
Okay, good. I think those assurances are helpful because I think everybody that's familiar with the site loves that oak savanna stand and wants to see it remain as part of nature and otherwise pretty urban environment, so thanks for that. Councilmember Agnew.
Thank you. This one, I think, might also be for city staff, but I know that there was a considerable amount of discussion about what would require revisiting either Planning Commission or city council for future changes. Can you help me understand, you know, maybe a couple more of those specifics if they came back and wanted to, for example, build a parking ramp in the back again, like one of those visuals or one of the presentations earlier on had shown? Would that necessitate them coming back to city council? And maybe where is that line of what would be permissible as-is versus what would require them to come back?
Yeah, to add a new building on the site or a new parking ramp, that would require a site plan review that would come back before the Planning Commission and city council.
Okay, and then based off of the tree comment, which I do think is an important one, I understand we're also, at the same time, looking at a potential tree canopy ordinance that would affect down the road, sites like this. Is that true? And can you maybe give me an update on potential timeline for that?
Yes, I believe before the end of the year, maybe later this summer, we will have a commercial tree protection ordinance in front of the Planning Commission and city council.
Thank you.
Other questions from council members for the applicant at this point in time? All right, stand by, there may be some questions based on public testimony, so I'll ask you just to sit down and take it easy for a few minutes, and we'll open this matter up for public testimony. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and testify regarding this matter, feel free to do so. You'll have three minutes, and you'll get a yellow warning light when you've got 30 seconds to go, and we ask folks to wrap up their comments within that three-minute period. So when the red light goes on, you should be wrapping up your comments. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Nora Davis, and I live at 6921 Southdale Road in the Lake Cornelia neighborhood. And this has been a very interesting project. You know, I spend a lot of time sending information out to everyone on my email list, and there are a lot of people on my email list. But this one has been frustrating because we didn't know what was going to happen. Thank you for the information you gave tonight because now we have an idea of what's going to happen. We didn't know that. Had some angry folks that were not happy that my request to meet was denied, but it was a very uncomfortable position for me to be in. Now we know what's going to happen, and now we know, and we don't have a lot of time to react, but react we will. And the trees, you know, we do love those trees. They are a perfect buffer for that entire neighborhood. And my concern, and the concern of several other people, was, okay, so we changed the ordinance, does that mean it's going to be another battle, another tree battle the next time around? Can something be added to that ordinance that says there shall be no touching of the trees along Valley View Road? Because it is important to people. We have lost so many trees in the area, and I just, you know, we don't have as many birds as we did, and we don't have as many trees as we did. And if we could protect those trees in this new ordinance, that would be wonderful. It would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Is he over here or over here?
I think if you just are going to speak, it's better to use a side podium. If you have some illustrations you want to use.
I have no illustrations. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jerry Kraus. I live at 6566 France Avenue South at the Pointe de France condominiums, directly north of this property.
What's your unit number?
It's unit number 308. It's on the pond side.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson.
Thank you. The, two items. I was here a year and a half ago or so when the other proposal was being thought about or being proposed, and then was withdrawn, I think it was at the plan board. A couple of things that I was concerned about then and maybe is kind of re-arising now is the area along France Avenue. I walk a lot along France Avenue, and it's very unfriendly. I know the applicant has talked about at least enhancing a portion of this site where they're doing some work, but the entire length of France Avenue and facing and in trying to enhance what it looks like along France Avenue would be important to me, and I think important to other users of that sidewalk area. Also, the area of the infiltration pond, I'm not sure exactly what that's going to look like, but hopefully there is some context about perhaps landscaping and what it looks like, because it's just now appearing on the map. So thank you so very much, again, Jerry Kraus. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, anyone online? Maybe the applicant would consider coming back up and explaining the infiltration basin. I know when we talked about this in the past, it was underground, and this may be a different situation.
Good evening.
Ms. Colpin?
Yes, so the infiltration is going to be, it will be a surface, but it's not a wet pond, so it'll be a dry pond. So if it rains, it basically infiltrates within 24, 48 hours. So we don't have really any, like, wet landscaping around there because it's not going to be a wet pond.
It'll be landscaped.
Yes.
To accommodate rain garden-type materials.
Yes.
So if it rains, they won't be killed, but it will have a pleasant appearance, is what I hear you saying.
Correct.
Okay. Part of your landscaping plan.
Yes. And it basically is called the infiltration sort of rain garden. So that's what it is, but it doesn't, it's not going to have like the cattails or anything that's like a wet sort of landscaping that you would see around a wet pond.
Understood. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, to follow up on that, it's a rectangle in your diagram. Will it be, are you changing the shape of the parking lot there, or is that just the sort of the general area?
I was just using the square to show a general area of where it is. The pond itself is more of a linear area right in here.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other questions for the applicant at this point in time? Nobody online to testify. Staff is recommending that we close the public hearing at noon on Sunday, May 11, 2025, giving residents a chance to send in any supplemental written comments, and then continue the action to the May 2025 city council meeting for action. Is there a motion of that effect?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Pierce moves. Member Jackson seconds. The motion that we close the public hearing at noon on Sunday, May 11, 2025, and continue the action to the May 2025 city council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. This matter will stay open for public input until Sunday, end of business, May 11, 2025. I guess not end of business, but end of the day. And we'll continue the action to the May 2025 city council meeting for a decision. All right, very good. Thanks, everybody, for participating in this matter this evening. And we'll then move on to the next matter, which is in the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. And that is Resolution 2025-37, which accepts donations on behalf of the City of Edina. And we have one gift in that reporting period. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-37?
Still moved.
Second. Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2025-37, which accepts donations on behalf of the City of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2025-37, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. Resolution 2025-37 is adopted. One gift to administration in this portion of the reporting period regarding donations. And we had these folks with us last meeting, and it was Bob Thompson and Jack Weston, who have written a book called The Urban Sanctuary. It's a photographic journal, if you will, The Life of Minnehaha Creek, and they donated eight books worth $160 to the City of Edina. And thank you for being here, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Weston, and thank you for that generous gift. And their names will be posted up on the website as donors. And then the next matter before us, Addison Lewis, our community development coordinator, has this matter, and that is the potential rezoning subdivision site plan with variances at 5100 Eden Avenue for Opus Corporation, another matter we've been discussing for a few months now between the city council and the Planning Commission. So, Mr. Lewis, welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So as you mentioned, this is an item being continued from our last meeting. Opus Development Company has submitted applications for rezoning site plan, a new plat, and variances for the site at 5100 Eden Avenue. The proposal is to construct a five-story, 112,000-square-foot office building that would potentially include a commercial or retail use on the ground floor. The request requires rezoning from planned office district one to planned commercial district two, subdivision approval of a new plat to consolidate seven parcels into one, and site plan approval with several variances. At the previous meeting, we held a public hearing, and staff gave an overview of the project. Staff is recommending approval, as did the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission had a few recommended conditions for approval, which the applicant has already revised their plans to comply with. So tonight, I won't go through my entire presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions. There was a follow-up, a question I was going to respond to from Councilmember Agnew, but since she stepped away, I can hold off on answering that one.
All right, well, we'll wait for her, but Councilmember Jackson has one for you, I think.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I watched the presentation and everything. Thanks for your work. The one question I definitely had is, this has eight variances to it. When we are revising the zoning... So I watched the presentation and everything. Thanks for your work. The one question I definitely had is, this has eight variances to it. When we are revising the zoning code, do you anticipate that the type of zoning, commercial zoning that would be available in this area would maybe require fewer variances? Is that, is it, are the variances such that if we were redoing the whole zoning code for commercial in that area, it could be incorporated or are they site-specific?
Yeah, I think certainly a goal of when we do update our zoning ordinance, it will be to bring it closer into alignment with what is envisioned in, you know, the comprehensive plan and the small area plans. Right now, I think just from staff's analysis, there's kind of a bigger disconnect. So hopefully, these variances will be less. That's not to say that, you know, every project will not require variances, but hopefully they're closer to matching our true expectations. I think if you look at kind of some of the renderings in the small area plans, they're more closely aligned with what's being proposed than what you would get if someone were to do something under the existing ordinance that 100% complied.
Okay. So in your presentation, you had several of the buildings in the area and their sort of their size and their scale and this, and I assume you included those to show that this is in company with those, that it's very similar in size and scale to what's already there.
You're talking about the slide that showed the other, like recent development projects that have been approved.
Showed the Abador and Maison Green and things like that.
Yep. So yeah, throughout the report, I kind of talked about how, yeah, the building height, the floor-to-air ratio, the setbacks are very in line with those other recent.
Yeah, you had a chart too. I remember that.
Yep.
So, okay, so that was my question. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from council members at this point in time? And we've got people from the applicant with us, I think, as well?
That's true. Maybe I'll take this moment to respond to your question from the last meeting, Councilmember Agnew. You had a question on the compliance table here and why there was a, you know, sort of a discrepancy here. So first of all, there's a bit of a typo here. So these two setbacks should be flipped. It's actually 45 feet to the curb along Eden. And the reason why there's, this is 45 feet and not 40, is because the property line along Eden is not perfectly parallel with the curb, so it kind of fluctuates from like 30 to 35 feet. And then this 34 feet should be along the Arcadia side. It's not to the curb. It's actually to this other portion of the building. So it was saying it's a 10-foot setback here, but a 34-foot setback to this portion of the building. Yep, yep. That was, her question was on the PUD, on the compliance table.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from council members? Okay, very good. Anything else, Mr. Lewis, for us at this point in time?
No, nothing further.
All right. Recommended motion is that we adopt Resolution 2025-33, which would approve the rezoning subdivision site plan with variances at 5100 Eden Avenue for Opus Corporation. Any further discussion? Is anyone on the council care to make that motion?
Make the motion.
Member Jackson moves.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2025-33, which would approve the rezoning subdivision and site plan with variances at 5100 Eden Avenue for Opus Corporation. Any further discussion?
Yes, I just want to make a couple of comments. So I want to thank Opus for coming to Edina. I think this is exciting. I think having your name on Highway 100 will be very cool. I want to say my appreciation for taking the comments from the site plan and from the Planning Commission, making the motion, the movement around by foot and bicycle and you took that to heart and you incorporated it. I want to say thank you. That meant a lot. And I, as I was reading through the sustainability building questionnaire, the way you have placed the building to maximize the light and minimize the air conditioning, I really appreciate. That's one of the things I look for and hope for in new development. So it's nicely done and welcome to Edina.
Hey, she's anticipating the good.
Well, I hope. With my vote.
She's appreciative. All right. We've got a motion, the second, we've had some discussion here, and there may be some other comments too, but I think we'll vote right now and get that part of it done. All those in favor of adoption of the Resolution 2025-33, which would approve the rezoning subdivision site plan with variances at 5100 Eden Avenue in Edina for Opus Corporation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Resolution 2025-33 is approved. And I thought Councilmember Jackson, who unfortunately had to miss the last meeting due to a family situation, spoke well on behalf of all of us, I think, as to the level of cooperation we've had both from, I think, leadership at Opus as well as the architects involved and the responsiveness to the suggested changes that were made. And Mr. Manan just can't resist coming up and we're glad you came up.
I just wanted to echo, thank you for all the comments. Thank you for the cooperation and collaboration throughout. It took a little while on this site to get there, but we really appreciate it. We're excited to be in Edina and appreciate everything throughout.
Yeah, and so tell us a little bit about what's next, what next step?
Good question. We close on the land tomorrow, so that was going to happen either way. Even if we were coming back here, we were going to close tomorrow. And we are working to get our demolition underway, hopefully by July or August. So we're going to hit the ground running here pretty quick and then it's about 16 months of construction, so it would be complete end of '26. And Opus will obviously be the first tenant. We're working with some brokers to secure other tenants as well. So excited to get rolling on it and the building on stilts will be hopefully down by this fall, so we're very excited.
We're all excited to have you here.
Yeah, thank you.
In a town that was home for so many of your family and the Roundhorse family as well, especially the Roundhorse family, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Manan. Okay, we're on to the next matter, which is the potential adoption of the Lincoln-Londonderry Small Area Plan and submission to the Met Council. And Mr. Lewis has this matter as well. And Zach Lockram from Men Collaborative is here with us again for this meeting. Just a reminder, folks on the council, we are missing a council member this evening. This requires a four-fifths vote, so we'd have to be unanimous here on our decision-making process tonight to approve it as recommended by staff and get it sent off to the Met Council. So, Mr. Lewis, go ahead.
That's correct. And yeah, and Zach couldn't be here tonight.
Bear with me a second. Councilmember Agnew has a question.
So I just wanted to seek clarification on that because our agenda says two-thirds majority. And I know that we had heard all four, but I'm just curious, does it require two-thirds, which I think three-fourths would be greater than? Or does it really require all four?
It really requires, Mayor, it really requires all four, four-fifths majority, not two-thirds. I'm not sure where that note on the agenda came from, but the statutory requirement is four-fifths in this situation.
Thank you.
I like your math, too. Thanks for the question. All right, Mr. Lewis, go ahead.
All right, thank you. And yeah, Zach couldn't be here tonight, but we have Sandy Mueller's Comstock from the Men team here tonight. So tonight, yeah, staff is seeking a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-32, approving the Lincoln and Londonderry Small Area Plan and authorizing submission to the Met Council. At the last meeting, members of the Planning Commission and consultant team presented an overview of the plan and we also held the public hearing. So tonight, we're just here to answer any additional questions you might have.
Councilmembers, questions? I think we've gotten quite a bit of feedback in the last couple of weeks too from residents, but I don't know, Director Teague, anything further that you wanted to add?
Nothing further from me.
Yeah, I think the Planning Commission staff all recommend that we, the process that we had was thorough and comprehensive, a lot of public participation. The time period involved, I think, was over a year with many meetings and certainly there are different views of the world, as we all know, and we've seen some of those over the past couple of weeks, in particular with emails and things. But nonetheless, we stand here ready to vote on this tonight and approve it and then by resolution and also potentially authorize the submission of it to the Met Council. So is there a motion of that effect to adopt Resolution 2025-32, which would approve the Lincoln and Londonderry Small Area Plan and also authorize the submission of that plan to the Metropolitan Council?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the Resolution 2025-32, which would approve the Lincoln and Londonderry Small Area Plan and authorize submission of that plan to the Met Council. Any further discussion?
I do have some comments. Is it appropriate now?
Comments, fine.
Okay. So this was a lot and I want to say thank you to everybody who was involved in this. It was a lot of work, staff and the task force members and consultants. It was, you know, I really appreciate it was very thoughtfully done. You know, I want to acknowledge that in the course of having this conversation, there were people who said, we don't want anything to change. And I respect that and I acknowledge it. Sometimes we can't help, but things will change. Time takes its toll. And so now we have a very good blueprint for what change can look like that's a neighborhood-informed. And so I'm very grateful for all the different levels of participation in this. I thought it was really interesting that in the report, it talked about the changing relationship with Nine Mile Creek. And it's, that's fascinating to me because it is with the bike trail, especially now, it's a beautiful natural thing before it was kind of hidden and polluted, really. And so now we can understand where the water's going and how that all works and we can enhance it here at the Lincoln and Londonderry area. I also very much love the value statements about the environment, making it safe and convenient, looking at the transportation issues there. Those are all things that we can, you know, I live in the neighborhood, these are things I'm concerned with every day, especially the traffic movement, and I know that the neighbors are concerned about that. I am very pleased that the way you set the expectations, including the size of the costs for the different ideas, because now when something comes up, oh, that's a great idea. Yeah, well, who's going to pay for it? Now we know it's a really big, good idea or it's a doable, good idea. And so I'm very thankful for that. I'm thankful for the list of funding sources so we can get ideas going about, well, maybe there's a pot of money that's going to come in that we can do some of this and gets the process, starts it so that it's not just a blank piece of paper. I really appreciate including the city policies and the value statements that we already have into the framework of this. It really echoes back what we hear over and over again, that we like our green spaces in Edina, we like the environment and we want a place that we can walk and enjoy. So I was really pleased with the structure of the report as well as the content. And it was commented by my peers at the last meeting about the final workshop outcomes. I thought that was really good to test the temperature. Did we do, you know, are we reflecting what people were expecting? And that was really comforting, too. Again, I know, I acknowledge the people who don't want to see any change, but time happens and change sometimes is necessary. And now we have the value statement for what people are looking forward and can expect if change is going to happen. So with that, that's my comment. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for those comments. Remember, Agnew has some as well.
Yes, thank you. I know I provided a lot of comments at the last meeting, so I won't reiterate all of those, but I did just want to comment, I think that this should be used as a template for how we do some of these area plans. In particular, going through and surveying those who were a part of the process at the end, do you feel like this output is in alignment? And I didn't quote the exact phrasing, but there was a survey conducted, right, to get that pulse of how close is this to the input that was provided throughout? Because there will always be, you can't meet everyone's needs in a project like this. And I just thought that that was a really, really nice way to get that final validation and I hope it's something that we continue to use, especially as we're looking at our comprehensive plan updates and all of that. I just really like that as a pulse. So thank you for introducing, well, maybe this has been done before, but thank you for emphasizing that as a data point as we continue to ask, how close is this to what the community has provided as input? And from the results, it's really close. So I really appreciate all of the work that went into this and thank you.
Member Pierce. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just echo Member Agnew. I do think that this is how the process is supposed to work. And so we kind of know, everybody can remember how we ended up at the point where we're doing the, we said we'd do a small area plan. And I do remember walking with Member Jackson, met with several residents there. And the point that I keep coming back to is, everybody wants to be heard. And I think we did that in this case. The hard part is when people want to be heard and they want you to agree with them. That's tough, but I do think this process was a good process and so I thank you for the work that you've done.
Thanks. Ms. Miller, thanks for being with us. I was looking for Mr. Lockram earlier and I couldn't see. Sometimes you can't see everybody that's out in the audience, so thanks for being here with us this evening. I thought Councilmember Jackson raised an interesting point that came to me too in this process and that was, and then being over there, as Member Pierce mentions, and walking the neighborhood and the site and it's like you've got mostly ignored nature. It's like people knew it was there, all of this wonderful nature that just is right there, but not blended into anything, not immersed into what's going on in the commercial industrial area, but just lying there as a hidden gem almost, not out of sight, but mostly out of mind, I'd say. And I think that this is a really wonderful opportunity to create something extraordinarily special over there, especially with that regional trail going through there. So thanks for your good work of your organization. I think you did a good job leading the conversation and making sure all these voices are heard as Member Pierce says and well-understood. And Member Jackson also reminded me as she talked about change, my, all the years I've been doing this, my favorite bumper sticker I saw one day was, "Change is good, you go first." And so, you know, that kind of hangs with all of us that do public service. Change is good, you go first. So, thanks again. And now we've got a vote to take here. We've got a motion.
Mayor, could I just clarify my previous response to Member Agnew's question? So my response was correct, but I just wanted to point out that the notation on the agenda is actually also correct because it's two-thirds of the entire council, including those members not present and voting. So that would, with a five-member council, that'll, you require four votes because it has to be more than three, it's three and a third. So if it was two-thirds of the members here present and voting, it would only require fewer votes, but since it's two-thirds of the entire council, including members not present, that requires the four votes. So that's the more detailed technical explanation. The answer is the same, but I wanted to make sure the explanation was clear.
That is clarifying. Thanks for that. All right, we've got a motion, the second, to adopt Resolution 2025-32, which would approve the Lincoln and Londonderry Small Area Plan and authorize the submission of that plan to the Metropolitan Council. All those in favor of adoption of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried? Resolution 2025-32 is adopted. Thanks, everybody, for all that great work. And Mr. Lewis, you deserve a special praise, helping lead this from a staff perspective. We know that your temperament and your wisdom really helped guide this whole thing, too. So thanks for that good work.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
All right. Now, we've got a sketch plan review that Director Teague has, and this is a site, the old Kevin Keyes Automotive Repair Site that we've been working on. We've looked at a lot of different options and the neighbors have consistently said, we want housing, we want housing, and we've got some proposal here that involves housing of a certain type and we're eager to hear more about it and have a little conversation with the proposed developer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'll just give an introduction overview and then the development team will present the detail of the project. So as you mentioned, this is the fourth proposal we've had, I think, in the last four years. Each of the other three required a comprehensive plan amendment. This one does not, and I'll get into that in a minute. But the proposal is to tear down the existing old Keys Auto Repair and build a three-story, 20-unit memory care facility. So this would require a rezoning from PCD IV, which only allows car washes, auto repair, that type of thing, to PRD V, which is the Planned Residential District, and that would allow rest homes, convalescent homes, and nursing homes. Site plan review would be required. There are a number of variances. We've looked at that little triangle. You really can't build anything on this site without variances. So there would be a number of variances, including parking. They would be short parked, so there would be parking that would likely spill out onto Eden Prairie Road. As part of any formal application, a traffic and parking study would be needed. Some of the things we Some of the things we want to look at in the traffic study is, they're proposing basically a, well, two connections, one off Eden Prairie Road, one off Vernon. So staff has some concern about this becoming a cut-through for residents to the north. They would cut through the site if they wanted to go east on Vernon. So what are the impacts there? It's probably better to have just one access, whether it's Eden Prairie Road or Vernon. So that's something that we would flesh out as part of any formal application. So in regard to the comprehensive plan, so as I mentioned, this is guided medium-density residential. Within the description of our medium-density residential classification, it includes small institutional uses. And when you look up the definition of institutional use by the Met Council, it includes nursing homes. I contacted Met Council and they agreed that we would not need to amend our comprehensive plan. So that's significant in that it requires a three-fifths vote, as opposed to four-fifths. So with that, I will call the development team up and they will introduce themselves and provide more detail of the project.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. Josh Branstad, I'm president-owner of Greco. We're a local multifamily development and property management group. We wouldn't manage this property, but we are also in that line of business, more in the standard apartment-type homes. You know, we got introduced to this project about sixty, sixty to seventy-five days ago. And really, it's been on kind of a conquest to get as much feedback as possible from all the interested stakeholders, both directly adjacent to the site and the broader neighborhood, to really kind of hear where the consternations been on the prior site plans, prior uses, et cetera. And what we came away with is, you know, trying to really solve for what creates the lowest amount of traffic, is a rather quiet use, and probably frankly has a lower visitor count when residents are at home within the neighborhood. And so that's how we've come to the memory care use here that we are currently evaluating as part of the project. I do want to just note that while we do have a straight thoroughfare cut-through from Vernon to Eden Prairie, I do want to note, and I didn't do this at the planning commission and my team reminded me of it, we are really proposing that more as an emergency access only. So in our vision is, is that connection to Eden Prairie would have some type of an emergency access, close-off. So when it's not in use by an emergency vehicle, whether that's a decorative chain-style system, it's an automated lift system, there's a variety of different systems out there that we can evaluate as part of that. That's really the only reason we put that in here. And like Kerry had mentioned, you know, as we work through this process with the engineering department and the rest of the city, we can get through that and identify what should or should not happen there, frankly. But through this process, we've heard a lot of varying, different degrees of feedback. We've heard extremely positive feedback. We've heard, you know, folks that really wanted to have a commercial use here. We're not a pizza operator or restaurant operator. We do housing. So we've continued to go down that path. I think as we boil it down, you know, out of that feedback, yeah, I think this was consistent with the planning commission last week as well, as we kind of boiled it down, we continue to come back to really kind of three big buckets for us. And two of them are very interrelated, and that's traffic, visitor counts, staffing, vendor counts, et cetera, and how that will all evolve throughout a week, et cetera. And I've got a ton of stats here, because we started really diving into that over the last week with our operator. And I think the big theme, before I go into a bunch of detailed stats, but it is what is occurring to me is, as I look at these and the time schedules and whatnot, the majority, about ninety-five percent of our traffic flow at this site happens between Monday through Friday, between eight AM and seven PM. So kind of a reverse, a reverse peak of occupancy versus what you would see in a residential neighborhood, while the majority of folks are at work and whatnot. So I was positively, came away from that with kind of a positive review of that. I think the other big piece, too, is outside of traffic, parking, and visitor counts is really been related to the appearance of the building, how will that fit within a single-family neighborhood? And I think what we have communicated to the neighbors is that it's going to be a very high-quality project. I think we'll take a lot of influences from the adjacent two condo buildings, be similar in height, and, but we would want to incorporate some additional residential features into it. So as Kerry has mentioned, this is a three-story project. We've got four units on the main floor with sixteen units between the top two floors, so eight and eight. One other feedback item we got from the neighborhood was, you know, could emergency vehicles, temporary drop-offs, pickups, short-term stays, five-to-ten-minute transitional points arrivals at the project, could they just access an in-and-out off of Vernon? We said, you know, we can simulate that in here, but we think that ultimately it comes down to what the city engineering team directs us to, the traffic study states. And then obviously, the county would be another piece of this. As you work up through the building, you know, the main floor is where we have our commercial kitchen, but we have internal amenity spaces, office functionality, et cetera, on the first floor along with those four units. And it also has the outdoor access to our outdoor garden space. One of the feedbacks at the, a question at the planning commission was, you know, does that, is this adequate enough outdoor space? You know, we did discuss, you know, this could be an outdoor space on each level for some type of screen and porch, et cetera. And then floors two and three, again, it's a repetitive floor plate for those two floors where we have eight units each floor along with their common space. Another feedback element that we, here, we're just mocking up with a massing diagram, but folks have asked, you know, how could we screen on each one of the property borders to the neighborhood? So we simulated a six-foot fence, an eight-foot fence, and then a ten-foot fence, just to give more perspective than anything. These are, this is not a security fence. This is not meant to secure the site or anything of that nature, more so to, in response to screening elements. And then we also anticipate that, you know, if there was a fence incorporated, you know, there needs to be an adequate level of landscaping as well to soften that. And then at the back of the presentation, the last two pages, we have some interior perspectives of concept images. This isn't necessarily exactly how we would design this building, but just more ideation than anything. And then the same with the exterior, you know, we anticipate incorporating brick as a part of the project, along with some of the residents' feedback was, you know, can we incorporate some of these more residential-feeling elements that are present in the existing fabric of the neighborhood today? So with that, you know, we're obviously in the, we're not even in the starting blocks yet on this project, but we value everybody's feedback and we look forward to hearing your feedback this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Branstad. Let's go to councilmembers and see what their thoughts are initially here. Councilmember Agnew, any thoughts you want to share? Or I see, I'm going to put you on pause. I see Member Pierce taking notes here. So let's go to Councilmember Pierce first.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So first question, just from a function standpoint, describe memory care, what will be happening at the facility?
Yeah, so this is full, it's a full-service facility that individuals are coming that have a variety of different acuties of dementia, ultimately, that they can no longer live on their own and then they need care. So here, we would have twenty of those units, so twenty occupants. It's a single occupant per unit. And then each floor would have, during the daytime, each floor would have a minimum of two, or they would have approximately two staff members attending to those floors. And in these smaller standalone memory care facilities, you know, it's what's, I guess, our operator considers a universal staffing model, that these individuals are cross-trained across a variety of different roles and functions at those sites. So they can have full-service medical care. They do have incoming, you know, a couple times, one to two times a week, occupational therapy, nurse practitioners, et cetera, for any type of specialty needs. But in large part, about ninety percent of their care is provided there on-site.
Okay. So I ask that question largely because of the location. So with Vernon being the frontage road essentially for the facility, would there be any concerns that residents could bear in the traffic versus, you know, this being in a more, truly a more residential setting in terms of the entry points?
Yeah. No, we don't feel that's an issue. We've developed a number of these. We've developed two of these and more of an urban, one about the exact same type of a location in Bloomington called Nine Mile Catered Living, where we had ground floor, we had twenty ground-floor memory care units on Old Chocopee Road and an extremely busy road. But the way the interiors of this building are designed is really to dissuade people from finding exit points, because that is the number-one, number-one potential issue that we have. And then additionally, we have the staff members there on-site, too, also.
Okay.
And I don't, Mindy, I don't know if there's anything further to add to that.
If I may, I'm Mindy Michael with Coswellson Architects. So we'd be designing this building with memory care. Typically, the building is completely secured at all times, so, you know, you're not going to want your, you know, elderly mother or grandmother wandering out into the exterior of the, during January with no coat. They may not recognize why they're there, but you want for their safety, for them to be secured within the building. So there would be access points. Usually, we utilize something like, called a magnetic lock system that can be overridden with a keypad or the property credentials and such. But it's secure in keeping the residents inside the building unless there's a fire alarm, and then the mag locks drop and people are able to egress the building.
Thank you. And then maybe one other question, but just a comment, when you, should you come back, the massing, like granted, that is just a placeholder, essentially. But it's a horrible placeholder. So should you come back? I would like for us to be able to see the, kind of a rendering of what you're thinking in the context of the neighborhood as well as the condo units as well, so that we can really get a sense and feel for what it looks like and what it'll feel like in that area. And then the only other question is related to, you've alluded to feedback from residents. And so just confirm if you've had, if you've had and how many meetings you've had with the residents. And then just generally, if there's other feedback that you've gotten that you've incorporated, I'd like to hear that as well. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, so we've had a large group resident meeting that had approximately thirty folks that visited on April, I think it was Saturday, April 12th. And then prior to that, we had two smaller, immediate neighborhood meetings. And then we've had two other individual, one-on-one meetings with residents from the area. And so, yes, so I think from the feedback aspect from those meetings, what you will see, the entrance point here off of Vernon and evaluating whether that's a plausible path, this being an emergency-only access point, or the ability to not even have it if life safety says, hey, you don't need that, we have plenty of access directly from the site. And then the other piece, I would say, has been primarily related to the fencing and the screening along the property lines, and then also how the exterior concepts will come together.
Yeah, I do like the comment that you made earlier from the residents asking about the look and feel. Can it have more of that residential look? I do appreciate that comment as well, so.
I guess then parking, too, the subject at hand.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So when we get to site plan, the first thing I think about is how people move through the site. So I had someone reach out to me today, and you've got the sidewalk shown there that's in the north side of the property. Is it in your intention to leave that as it is?
The sidewalk to, the sidewalk to, so this is the community. This is not ours.
Oh, okay.
But this is our, we would install this sidewalk right here.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then, so you'll have food trucks coming in, your suppliers, and ambulances coming in. Tell me a little bit how trucks would move through this site, and both to, in terms of ambulances and in terms of garbage trucks and things. How would your suppliers get in and out of this parking lot?
So emergency-level vehicles would have really one of two options, I guess three technically, but one, if this came to life, the access off of Vernon, drop-off pickup, that could be one component. Alternatively, we have this space right here, it's green, but this is really where we anticipate taking all deliveries, drop-offs, garbage, et cetera, picked up there. So there is the turn radius to back into here and come back out with an ambulance or a box-style truck for food deliveries and whatnot. Thirdly, I guess, the alternative option would be if emergency services, you know, stated that they need a cut-through to the site, this would be an emergency access-only component right here.
Okay. So you've got, that turn radius is big enough for a garbage truck to get in and out?
Correct.
Okay. So now you said that you operate similar types of buildings, but not memory care units?
Correct. We don't operate assisted living or memory care type of projects. We operate your standard apartment buildings.
Okay. So another comment that was given to me was, there are some other memory care units here in Edina. And I'm curious as to how many staff are going to be there and how, what the visitor count is. So I know there'll be a traffic study, but do we, are you looking at the other memory care units here in Edina to sort of get a ratio of how many parking spots you'll need?
Yeah, so the operator that we have that would operate this for us is the second or third-largest assisted living operator, memory care operator in the state of Minnesota. So we'll be using their data points. And I've got a host of them here, you know, which I'm more than happy to talk about tonight, too, if we want to go to that level. It's obviously very preliminary in their estimates today, and they could sway from there. But on average, we anticipate having seven staff members here throughout the main operating hours of the day.
Seven.
And those staff members transition one at a time, so we'll go up to eight when those staff members transition. Our overnight staffing, staffing load will be four individuals. Now, if we have, this building is not big enough to have big events either. You know, one of my questions was to them, Monday, we were having this conversation of, well, what if we have a big event? What if there's a larger, well, this building just is not one of those types of buildings because we don't have the space that's available to that. But they said you could see an additional two members come for that hour-to-two-hour time period. Then I think as we took it to the next step, we said, all right, how many visitors are going to be here on any given day? And they said, you know, our average visitor load is between one and five, five at the high end. And we see the higher loads for visitors on the Saturday-Sunday timeframe, between that eight-to-seven timeframe. Most of the occupants here are in bed by that seven-to-eight o'clock timeframe every evening. Then when we start talking about vendors, trash, that's two to three times a week for a ten-to-fifteen-minute stop. Food is two to three times a week, Monday through Friday during the day hours. Hospice could be two to three times a week, depending on the occupant requirements here. But again, that's during the daytime. Any type of entertainment is one to two times a week, typically during the daytime, but they do have Saturday and Sunday events for family members to come and attend and visit. Nurse practitioners and occupational therapists, those are two to three times a week, Monday through Friday during the daytime. And then office supplies, medical supplies, that's once every other week, again, during the daytime hours. Emergency vehicle visits, they would expect one to three a month at this location. And, you know, historically, they've had a rather close relationship with those emergency vehicle operators, and they'll usually ask for, you know, no need for a siren or lights, et cetera, just given the context of the residential neighborhood. Now, they have the ability to make that decision on their own. But, you know, really, those visits aren't happening unless there's an actual medical emergency here, because we have the full, you know, full care staff here.
Okay. And then in their meetings with the residents, I could envision this, you know, having on a Saturday, a whole bunch of visitors. Maybe it's Mother's Day, maybe it's Christmas or something. What was their feedback about vis- What was their feedback about visitors parking on the road? I know, I'm just curious what they said about that.
Yeah, I think the feedback we had related to that, people understand that folks would need to park on Eden Prairie Road. I think some of the feedback we had, it probably wouldn't be all that different than somebody having a dinner party or something of that nature. But I think that the short term, that visitors stay in that one to two-hour average timeframe, I think is what folks were somewhat accepting of. But I think that is one of the concern points.
Okay, great, all right. And then the final question is about the front entry, that if I were going there for the first time to visit somebody, would I be able to see the front entry easily from Vernon and know that this is where I go in? Or will it be clearly marked and welcoming?
Yeah, definitely. So here at the front entrance, it'll be at the predominant corner closest to Vernon. And then we also have a change of surface type here. And usually what we would do is we put some type of signage at that location too, and it'll be lit different than the rest of the building, but it'll be a very obvious location to go to.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks. I'll send over Agnew.
Thank you. A lot of the questions that I had have been answered, but I am curious, you mentioned, maybe this is with other kind of memory care providers that you could query for these things, but examples of residents leaving unwanted. So I was like, I quickly looked up the Nine Mile Care in Chocopee. I think that that's a good example with that site being on such a busy road. I appreciate that example. But do you know if there are examples or any data that could be researched and come back with, with residents leaving unwanted?
Yeah, we can absolutely ascertain that, yep.
Okay, awesome. Because I am, I am really concerned about the security of the site. And even with that example in Chocopee or Bloomington, on Old Chocopee Road, the, there's a median, so there's like a dry, a frontage road, and then there's a boulevard, and then there's that busier street. Whereas based off of this graphic, it feels closer. So I'm just kind of curious to understand, like, the overall safety of the residents that would live there. And then I'm curious, I know we've talked about, you work with emergency to ensure that there's the appropriate access, whether they need that entrance or exit out of the north side of the site. But I'm also curious to know if, some of my own assumptions are that there would probably be more emergency vehicles to this site. So I'm just kind of curious from a data perspective, if that would be information that you would have, and just when we're thinking about the through fare and how much of a priority that needs to be when we're considering, I just think that that would be helpful. And then I would also want to see, this isn't a question, but maybe it is a question, is there going to be landscaping around here and maybe it's just not included in this draft?
Yes, absolutely. Well, we will heavily landscape the edges of the property.
Okay. One other piece that I don't see in this, that I saw in other sketch plans or other proposals that we had for the site, was including like a city sidewalk along that site. And I know it was always like a topic of conversation because we're like, what else is it connecting to in some of those conversations? But I don't see that here. And so when I think about that overall master pedestrian strategy that we have across the city, that might be something that we need to consider as a city council as well for this site. I guess general, general thoughts and feedback is, I know sometimes like people aren't as excited about the yellow building that's there today, but I do feel there is a loss in a unique property and a property with some history. And some of the previous proposals that we had found ways to leverage that existing site, which I liked both from a sustainability perspective, but also just finding new ways to leverage existing building for kind of innovative ways, I thought was really neat. And I'm also like, this feels very dense for this area, just from like an overall site layout perspective. So I do have some concerns on that, but it also could be related to what Member Pierce was saying of, it could be the way that it was presented. So that would need to be something that I see improve from my perspective, I would say. But overall, I think just generally disappointed to see it moving away from a community gathering location within this site. So those are all of my comments right now. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here, Mr. Brenson. Those four projects we looked at, it seemed to me, as I recall, that the closer you lived at the site, the less you were interested in commercial activity, whether it was a pizza place or some other kind of, you know, there was a drop-off or clothing sorter and repurposing clothing and, you know, the, what we kept hearing from people that were close by was that they wanted something related to housing. And so here you have come now with something that's not a traditional multifamily building like you normally do, but something that's really specialized. And at least the feedback I've had from neighbors is positive, I would say, so far. We're going to, you know, if you come back, we're going to go through a public hearing process, but it's a complicated site in terms of its shape. I think you've done a really kind of remarkable job with fitting something on the site that works from an economic return standpoint, but also provides service to folks in our community as an aging community, with as many people over 65 as under 18. You know, we're, I think all of the memory care places in Edina are full and there are waiting lists. So it's an interesting possibility here. I don't expect that it'll generate a lot of traffic, although it will be underparked and we're going to have to talk this through, on-street parking on Eden Prairie Road, access to Eden Prairie Road either by foot or this emergency entrance and exit. Those things yet to be discussed and yet to have public input on, but what I'm seeing so far, from a memory care standpoint, providing housing for folks that are having challenges in our community and having it be convenient for family members to get here, it's an interesting, interesting possibility, I'll put it that way. I think that in terms of the architecture of it and the landscaping, I know that between the city, if this moves forward, and your organization with your reputation, that it will be a really first-rate product that people, the town can be proud of and the people that live there and have their loved ones living there would be proud of to have them living there. So I'm not as concerned about that. I don't have any great affinity for the existing Kevin Keyes Building, personally. We tried to look at repurposing it, but it didn't work. So, on balance, other than some of the traffic concerns I have and the flow concerns that Director Teague mentioned, how do we make this site work properly so we don't end up in some awkward circumstances from a traffic movement standpoint? I'm eager to see where this goes. So, thanks for being with us.
Thank you very much for your feedback.
Does anybody else have any additional to add on? All right, very good. Yeah, thanks for being with us as well. All right. All right, we're going to get back with Director Milner now, and I think many of us have been hearing about this parking challenge over near Edina High School and students parking because the lots are full, parking over on Creek Valley or Nordic Circle and Nordic Way. And I mean, it's just, and our folks, Nick Baller in particular, has been trying to figure out, how do we accommodate some parking on the street or no parking? I mean, we've had a lot of different iterations of trying to work on this challenge over there with the neighbors and recognizing that students potentially need a place to park. We've got a parking lot over there that we're going to hear a little bit more about, and you're going to talk about some of the options that are available to us to think through. So, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. Yeah, let's talk a little bit about the Edina High School parking challenges and particularly the Creek Valley parking lot. So the questions we have before you tonight is, does the council want to provide parking to the Edina High School? Do we want to use our property to supply parking in the high school? And if so, then the second question is, do you want to maintain that parking lot in the winter? That would be a cost to the city. And so those are the kind of the questions. We'll talk about the parking study, how do we get to this point, challenges today, and then the soccer field parking lot, we'll show a little bit more about that. So here's a picture of what kind of really started those discussions is, as the year goes on, more sophomores get their license typically, and they're already booked out of parking permits. They're fully sold out on the site and at the three churches that we'll show you. So the cars start to squirt out into the neighborhoods in all directions as more of those drivers get their licenses and want to drive to school. So we see this every second half of the year. And here it happened in Creek Valley more so than in the past, and Traffic Safety made some recommendations and council approved those for now, and we'll share some of that. So just to orientate yourself, one and two is the Edina High School and the Valley View Middle School. Five, six, and seven are those churches that do have parking permits available through the school, where they're fully booked out and sold for, to use those lots during school hours. Three is the Creek Valley Elementary School, and four is that soccer field and parking lot that we'll talk about this evening, and more importantly, that Creek Valley Road, they're highlighted. 2018, when the high school had expansion plans, we did a parking study. We had a lot of comments from the neighborhoods to the south and to the southeast. So this was the parking configuration at the start of that study. SRF was the consultant at the end of it. This was their graphic they provided to the city and was accepted by city council. And down in that red box is what was approved by the city council for parking changes. So we did, all those streets are now no parking from eight to four during school days. That was phase one, that was the highest engaged neighborhoods in the comments we heard, and that's what they wanted. Then we identified potential phase two to the east and potential phase two to the west. Well, here we are, and we finally got to a point where some issues were starting to happen on the west side, and so we looked at this parking study for some guidance. We already had done the work, so we looked to it to see if it was something similar we wanted to do in this neighborhood. The current parking regulations, the red is permanent, no parking on both sides. The orange is both sides during school hours only. Green is one side permanent, and blue is one side school hours only. So this was the current configuration, and this was changed recently by council through the Traffic Safety Committee. You know, Nick Baller collects all the data and the committee has discussions, and we recommended approval of some parking changes on Creek Valley Road and Nordic Circle based on that previous parking study. So those were done and implemented, and we had some residents out there trying to stop our sign guys from installing stuff and had some great ideas, and you guys got a lot of emails at that point. So that's why we're here this evening, because council requested that discussion. So let's get to the soccer field parking lot. This is an interesting area. This is actually school property, but we maintain it. We maintain the soccer field and the parking lot. We have a city-owned parcel up by the elementary school with a parking lot. They maintain and operate that one. We can't find any legal documents that say it's a handshake agreement and we've all been happy the way it's been working. So technically, it's city property, but we're maintaining this, they're maintaining the other parking lot. There's 45 stalls, two accessible, there's no accessible ADA route to the high school. So I think that's important. If we are, if the high school wanted to dedicate this a parking lot, they may have to provide some ADA accessible route. There is no snow removal today. Our Parks Department does not remove snow today. There's one sign that says no parking, school days, eight to four in that lot, just one sign, and there's 45 stalls. So it's not signed appropriately if that's the way we want to go. Again, it's school district property, heavy, heavy summer use. So these same residents see soccer games every single night, and it's heavily parked, and they have their own temporary no parking signs they can put in front of their yards because there was no solution to address those three, four hours at night from the heavy use. We do not see a lot of Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail use here. There's so many other options to park and enter that trail facility that we don't see a lot of use here, even though that's what the trail is going around that soccer field. That you can see is the Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail. So we provided three options for you to consider this evening. One is allow parking lot use with no snow removal. So basically, what's kind of happening today, just remove that one sign. We put a sign up that says lot is not maintained, park at your own risk. We don't maintain it, we don't spend extra money. The neighbors across the street said this is happening today, they see a couple cars get stuck and the kids work it out and they get out of there and it typically melts in enough time. We could just allow parking lot use with snow removal, but again, that's an extra cost to our Parks Department to maintain. It would take them away from, because if we'd have to plow this, we'd have to be there before school hours. That would take them away from their primary duties of clearing snow off of hockey rinks and other park trails and amenities. Or just maintain that current restriction and add more signage. So we don't maintain it, and we sign it and say, all year long, you can't park there between eight and 4:00 p.m. during school hours. So those are the options before you, and I would be happy to take some feedback on how you think we should handle this situation.
Does the entrance into the parking ramp accommodate, you know, when you think about plowing, we've got people out early in the morning plowing streets, including, I think that's Nordic Circle there. Could a snowplow truck access that lot and just swing in there and take two swipes and swing back out again as part of its work? Or is it going to take a smaller piece of equipment to do that plowing?
So plowing duties are separated between parks and public works. They would say, we're, public works would say, we're staffed with getting the streets open and we don't even want to do that kind of stuff because it does take a little different equipment, lots of backing up. I wish it was as easy as just swinging in there and doing it, but there's a lot of other stuff that goes into slow removal. If it's starting to stack up, you're pushing it and you're doing stuff. So it's not just an easy in and out. Either equipment could enter that site, to be honest with you, but public works is really focused on street maintenance.
I'll member Pierce, I'll make some comments later. I think we all got curiosities here.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I actually just really wanted you to ground us on how we got here. So do you remember the issues that were raised? Just go through those again.
This is the issue. Cars parking on both sides during school hours, down in front of homes, and Nick Baller and us got requests to, you've got to do something. This is a safety issue. There's no sidewalks. I see kids walking from these homes to the elementary school, trying to go between the cars. So people said it's a safety issue, which is similar comments we heard south of the high school in 2018. So then Traffic Safety said, well, we identified this area, future improvements, let's match what the conditions and restrictions were there. And that's what we did. We went through Traffic Safety, ETC, the council approved it, and it was implemented four to six weeks ago. And that's why we're there. And then the residents came out and said, just let them use the parking lot, and then they started emailing you with ideas, and that's where we're at.
I did have an email, maybe, I was thinking this was also part of it, where high school driver got a ticket from parking.
Yes, yep. Yep, so there was.
Because there's a no parking sign.
Because there's a sign there after the restrictions went in, and we knew you guys were getting a lot of emails, we asked PD not to enforce that parking lot until we had this conversation. So I think we worked with that individual on that. But yes, there was one ticket initially on that first or second day.
And then last grounding question. So thanks for the historical view. But then you said today, we don't maintain that area, yep, that parking lot. We don't do snow removal today. Do you know how long we, have we never done snow removal there?
Never done snow removal, according to Tom Swenson, who helped me with this.
And so, I mean, I will assume students have been using that parking lot up until this point, on and off.
Whether somebody complains to come have it enforced, but again, there's only one sign up there.
Yeah, okay.
It's actually right, there's a picture of it, so it's challenging.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Agnew.
Thank you. Do you have even like a swag estimate on what the cost to the city would be to maintain that during the winter?
According to Tom, it would take about an hour for every snow event. So that's an hour they're taking away from other park amenities, ice rinks, other trails and stuff like that.
Can you quantify it with a dollar amount?
I'd have to get that number. But in the, I guess, I would say it's de minimis in their grand scheme of operations over winter.
For sure, but.
There is a cost.
A data point, for sure, thank you. For the church lots, which you might not have a ton of expertise on, but I'm curious, do you know if all of those have accessible routes to the high school?
Oh, that's your, I was prepping to say, "How many stalls? Here's how many stalls I have." I'll help you with that one. Yes, they all got sidewalks that leave those parking lots and go along Valley View Road or Gleason, the Valley View, or Antrim. So, there's sidewalks on every one of those areas. How they exit the parking lot, that I can't answer, but once they exit, there's sidewalks. Versus, the other one is a dirt path going up a grassy hill to the high school from that lower Creek Valley parking lot area.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And then, I appreciate, because I was going to go here for the parking permit process, do you know how those are lotteryed or distributed?
This is the order. PSEO students first, four car pools second. With a senior, you've got to have, it's based on where you are, grade level, and then the number you want to have in your carpool. So, 4, 3, 2, 1, then junior, 4, 3, 2. Single cars with seniors, single car juniors, sophomore drivers in carpools. And the permit cost is $450 if you're on the high school, $180 per year if you're at one of those churches. And again, they're fully booked out. Here's the capacity, here's the assigned, and these are cars squirting out as more sophomores or whoever down the lower list here get their license or start to drive or whatever.
And so, even for the church parking, is that facilitated by the high school?
Yes.
They govern that process?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
They work with them and whatever they need between those 2 parties.
Clearly, Member Pierce is more familiar with this process than I am with children in daycare, so I appreciate that.
It's fixed by the time.
So, I guess where my inclination is right now, just to, I don't know, get some conversation kicked off among the council, is I think we should consider permitting out, whether it's 40 or all 45 of the stalls that are within that parking lot. I'm open on whether or not we maintain it. I feel like if they're going to pay us $180 per year, we probably should maintain it. That would hopefully cover the costs. And then, when we think about the street parking issue that I know was really what preempted this, I would, I would like to see it go down to just maybe a one-side limit. Right now, I think we have it down to no side parking during school hours.
Correct.
But I, I think that the street's wide enough where it could fit one side. So, that's kind of where I'm leaning right now, but love to hear others.
And I'll just offer, we did survey the residents, and they preferred both sides. So, just for a data point for you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
So, my first is a question. Do we have any comparable parks that are next to soccer fields, so really primarily only used in the summertime? Because I know the park in my neighborhood, the lot is plowed, but there's an ice rink there. So, is there anything comparable to this in the city that you know of?
Where we don't maintain the lot? Is that the question? I mean, there's got Pamela Park.
Where there's a lot, and it's only really a summer use, because like I said, in my neighborhood, there's a rink, so people are, there are practices there, and the lot's maintained. It seems kind of funny that we have a lot, and it's not maintained, but then there's no winter time use.
There's no activities here.
Right, there's no activities.
There's no winter use, so.
Right, is there anything comparable?
I don't, I'd have to ask.
Okay. So, that's something I'd like to know before I made a decision, but I'm leaning towards saying you can park there at your own risk and not pay for the thing, because if we did the permitting, then we have to have an ADA accessible sidewalk up to the high school, and that's expensive, and we have to maintain it and all those things. So, I say just kind of what the use has been is just fine with me. Park at your own risk if it's nice, yay, but if it's snow, bring a shovel, so.
And that's what the kids are doing.
But I would like to know if there's anything comparable in our park system. Thanks.
I'd say that my main concern is with those residents in that neighborhood, to make sure that they can get around in a safe manner. And to me, that means really thinking too carefully where any parking would be allowed Maybe none in that immediate neighborhood on either side of the street. I'm not sure. I'd want to have some neighborhood input on that. In terms of the parking lot itself, I think it's really been silly that we've got a parking lot there that holds 40-some cars, and we mark it as a no parking zone. It's a city parking lot, it's a public parking lot, and I think, I think we have, we should have, to me, to Member Jackson's point, we should have let people park in there to avoid getting tickets. And I've had at least one parent tell me that they, their kid got a ticket, and they had to pay the ticket by a certain time. So, they've had to pay a $50 ticket for parking in that parking lot. Said, "No parking," even though it's a public parking lot. It gets used all summer, and I suppose it's no parking school days, 8 to 4, because we don't maintain it. And I'm up in the air on that. I don't know if we should maintain it or shouldn't maintain it. My inclination is that we should maintain it and let kids park in there, and I'm not inclined to charge a fee. So, it's first come, first served, but they can't park in the neighborhood. That's kind of the direction I'm heading, but it's a, that's a little, we've all got some variations on theme going here. And so, I don't know if there's a common thread in there or not. I guess maybe using the parking lot is one common thread. Whether it gets plowed or not plowed, but allowing people to park in there, seems like that's a trend, and it's a common view.
Yeah. And we could always try one method, right? The easiest is option 1, using your own risk.
I'm not worried about the kids getting to the school. They got their own pathway up to the school, and then they get on a track that goes right up there, so.
Yep. But the maintenance piece.
Member Jackson raised an interesting point. If you charged, you might then have to provide different kind of access.
And is the high school willing to use it? I mean, they're working out the agreements with the church, and it's almost maybe a push-through of those fees to that property owner. Maybe this one, they don't see as relevant, and they don't want to do that.
Or maybe we only plow it if there's 6 inches of snow, you know, and if it's 1 or 2 inches, we just forget it.
I do think we have to know what problem we're trying to solve. And so, if we were trying to solve the problem of how horrible parking and traffic is around Valley View and the high school, then I'm all up for that conversation, but that's really not what we're doing here. I really think this came up because a kid got a ticket for parking in a public parking lot, and that was one issue. The other was when there's cars on both sides of the street, it's dangerous for folks to be walking, for kids to be walking on that street.
There's no sidewalks over there.
And there's no sidewalks. And so, I, I think that is a very specific use case that we're solving for, in my opinion. And so, I think if they have been using the lot before all this, and we weren't maintaining it, then we should let them use the lot, and we shouldn't maintain it. And then, if there's an issue for safety, where we've got cars parked on both sides of the street, then we should address that, and whether that's no parking on either side or parking on one side or what have you, those are the 2 things, I think.
Or portions of the street where there's no parking on either side. I mean, but it's something to analyze.
Yes, yep, yep.
Well, I think there may be, if we allow parking here.
Yeah.
And the school communicates that, this parking on the street issue, I think, almost goes away. We may not need any of those.
It'll only go away if it's marked, "No Parking," on the street.
Maybe if we can educate the kids that, "You just used the lot. Don't park on the street." So, there's a potential there that we have more signs than we need at that point, but...
The point James is making, if there's an over, there's a demand that can't be satisfied, then they'll go park on the street again.
Yep.
Because there's not enough parking anywhere.
Right.
Jackson.
Yeah, thank you. I thought we had made that, "No Parking on Both Sides of the Street."
We did. 8 to 4.
Yeah, 8 to 4. And so, that's the current status, and I don't think we should change that. And that's during school hours, right?
Sure.
So, in the summertime, people can park there or not? Or is it all year-round?
School days.
School days, okay. I mean, so I don't think there's a problem then with on the streets at this point. We've solved that, and it's just the parking lot that we're looking at.
We removed all the cars on the street. Now, they want to go to the parking lot.
Yeah.
Do we allow it? If the parking lot was available, we might not have had that street problem. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I think we leave the signs up on the street regardless.
You can always leave it.
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't want to touch that. I think we've, on the street, yes, because I think that's a safety issue, and I think we've solved it, and I haven't got anybody saying, "Oh, gosh, I have a bridge party, and nobody can park." So, I think we got that in the other neighborhood, actually, but...
Think about the maintenance issue.
I think they park at their own risk, unless there's other parks that we're maintaining that are similarly situated. Then I don't think we discriminate against this park. But if we're not, if there's another park like this, and we just leave it snowy in the winter, we just leave it snowy in the winter.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
We could try that one year, one season, and see how it goes.
Yeah. Yep.
We're leaving a revenue source on the table, though, here. So, I know that that was a, it's small, but it's something to consider. I would, I'm curious if that would be a requirement, and honestly, I'm just not as like well-versed in all of the ADA requirements, but my understanding would, the way that, one way you could interpret the law would be that there needs to be ADA-compliant options for students, which is why I was asking if the entirety of the parking lottery process were owned and governed by the school, because then they could distinguish ADA, students who need that ADA parking would then get priority in other lots that have it. I understood it to be, it has to be an option, and if we just use the lens of this one site with connectivity to the school, probably wouldn't be, but the totality of the offerings, it still might cover us.
We can research that. We'll research that.
So, I'm hearing 3 people, option 1, with maybe a little bit more data. Because we don't know if the school wants to participate in this parking lot from a revenue standpoint, but I think if we do number 1, that addresses all the emails and concerns that you've gotten. We leave the no parking up, and I think we're set, and we can come back to this topic again next February when we get some, another 300 new drivers, and they're squirting out into the neighborhoods. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen.
Think we've had any correspondents come in during the meeting? Kirk Ellison, okay. And we will now go to comments from Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just have one quick one, and that is to let you know that last week, I attended the annual conference of the Minnesota City Management Association. It's held at Maddens on Gull Lake. The theme this year was playful minds, productive leaders. There's a lot of discussion around humor in the workplace, as team building, asset planning, how to deal with misinformation in local government. So, it was a really fine presentation and conference this year. So, I appreciate the council's support in being able to attend. Thank you.
Senator Jackson, anything?
Nothing for me tonight.
Pierce?
Nothing for me tonight either. Thank you.
Agnew?
We, Mayor and I, last night, were able to attend the Cornelia Neighborhood Meeting at the Edina Public Works Site, and I just, I really appreciated that conversation. We spoke a little bit about traffic on 72nd, but then spent also a lot of time discussing with that neighborhood in particular, the possibility, the potential of the France Avenue underpass. And I know that we, as a council, have gotten a lot of emails and calls, and have probably had some one-off conversations about it, but this was the first structured meeting that we had, and it was really great to get that confirmation that there is a lot of excitement. And then, even today, I got a couple of follow-up emails from people who weren't able to attend but wanted to reiterate their excitement about that being a possibility. So, just really excited to continue exploring that as a city council, looking through those options, and I, it's great to have that confirmation that there is excitement with those neighborhoods as well. And the mayor might have some other thoughts about that, but that was the main takeaway for me. Thank you.
Yeah, that was good coverage of the event last night. Thank you. Just a couple other things for me, and that was a good public participation meeting last night, run by Sandy Carlson, was, you know, called the neighborhood meeting, and we let her run it in the Public Works Building, and it was well-attended, I think 30 to 40 people, my guess, and lively conversation around both those topics. So, thanks for that report out. Just a couple of quick things for me. I put some material from the Minnesota Golf Association at your spots on the dais here, and it was just a reminder that the Braymar is going to be the host for a national adaptive golf tournament, September 26 through the 28th of this year, and sponsored by the, you know, is hosted by the Minnesota Golf Association. They are so pleased to be at Braymar, and they've got a long, long history there. I think we probably have the oldest adaptive golf rec program, and maybe in the country. It's really something special for all the people that have disabilities, that love golf and want to be out there on a Monday night, and they, there's a lot of them there, and they're going to really love this tournament, the people coming from all over the country. And then, last Thursday, Jim Nelson, who served, lived in Edina so many years, and served us, I recall him always stepping up to volunteer. He was part of that group that came up with the Southdale Design Experience Guidelines, worked hand-in-hand with Jack Rice on so many things. And then, on a broader sort of basis, as he ran that Aberhart Consulting business, was a trusted advisor, I think, to the Vikings and the state on the new stadium downtown, and did so many great things. Passed away in his early 80s. He had the service at the Historic Chapel at Lakewood, and then a nice event afterwards. His son, Tom, did a spectacular job talking about his dad. Those recollections were just terrific. And his wife, Lorna, who lives still in Edina, Jim was living down at Friendship Village. And he had that, such a gentle nature to him, really smart guy, very patient, very caring, just a thoughtful, thoughtful man that did such wonderful things in this lifetime of his, and 83 doesn't seem that old anymore. So, we hate to see Jim pass on, and so, well-attended the event from many people in the real estate community. So, our best to James Walter Nelson in transcending this earth and heading somewhere else, and his family, and his wife, Lorna, in particular, are still living in Edina. So, our best to everybody in the Nelson family. We're thinking about you. And that is it for me. Did that cause anybody else to think of anything they wanted to raise from a true standpoint or comment standpoint? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves, Member Agnew seconds the motion to adjourn. Any further discussion, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. We stand adjourned. Motion approved.